All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, July 1st, 2024. Happy July. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Larson is running late. Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Bucelado?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up our first call to the public. Is there anybody in the public or online that would like to speak at this time? Please go ahead and raise your hand. I do not have any forms, so we are closing the first call to the public. There will be a second call to the public, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to item six, which is our presentations. Item six A, we have our presentation for the acceptance of the donation of $3,000 from the Michelle Gallagher Memorial Fund. At this time, I'll call forward Ms. Allison Feliz.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. This evening, we have representatives from the Gallagher Foundation. We have Denise Smith, which is Michelle's mom, or I'm sorry, sister, Marcella Gallagher, which is Michelle's mom, and Patty Smith, which is also one of Michelle's siblings. They're going to come up and talk a little bit about Michelle, but I just wanted to make sure I thanked them for their continued support. They continue to raise funds and contribute to the youth in the community by providing scholarships for children to participate in extracurricular activities. And they're just beautiful people and provide amazing things to the town. So I would like to call Denise Smith to go ahead and come up and talk a little bit about Michelle.
Mayor Walter and Town Councilmembers, it's an honor to stand before you today on behalf of the Michelle Gallagher Memorial Foundation Incorporated as we present a donation of $3,000 to the Town of Florence. This contribution is made in memory of Michelle Gallagher, who was a remarkable young woman whose legacy continues to inspire and uplift this community. Michelle had a heart full of love and compassion, especially for children. She firmly believed that every child, regardless of their financial circumstances, deserved the opportunity to engage in pro-social activities that foster growth, creativity, and a sense of belonging. Michelle understood that these experiences are vital for the development of young minds and hearts. Throughout her life, Michelle was a source of hope and encouragement. She worked to ensure that children who might otherwise be left out had the chance to participate in activities that build character, teamwork, and resilience. Whether it was through sports, arts, or educational programs, Michelle saw the potential in every child and dedicated herself to unlocking it. The Michelle Gallagher Memorial Foundation Incorporated was established to continue Michelle's mission and honor her dedication to making a difference in the lives of young people. Today's donation is a testament to her enduring spirit and the profound impact she had on this community. With this $3,000, we hope to provide more children in Florence with the opportunities they need to thrive and succeed. We are grateful to the Town of Florence for partnering with us in this endeavor and for sharing our commitment to supporting the youth in this community. Together, we can create a brighter future for children, one every child has the chance to explore their passions and reach their full potential. Thank you all very much for your continued support of this really important cause. Let us all strive to carry forward Michelle's legacy of love, compassion, and dedication to our children. Thank you.
Denise and family, thank you so much for carrying on Michelle's legacy and her tradition of caring about all of the children in the community. I believe that we all had a fantastic time engaging and playing, and we look forward to it every year.
It's a lot of fun.
And anybody who did not have an opportunity to, I would encourage you to look into the tournament. It will be next March.
Right.
And barring the weather, which only happened this one time, I believe.
This one time. So we had to have it in May this year, which was a little hot, but we made it and we got through it, and it was a great tournament. It was a wonderful turnout. We loved it, and the food was delicious, too. Well, thank you so much.
Can Council, can we greet them down and take a group shot together and continue to give thanks and promote? Next, we have a proclamation for July as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence, encouraging all of our residents to get outdoors and enjoy their communities through parks and recreation. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Paul King for a presentation.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. July is always a really warm month in Arizona, but it's one of our happiest months in parks and recreation. We have the pool open, we have summer camp running, it's our busiest time of the year. We've got our big Fourth of July event coming up this Thursday, so we're really busy and happily busy. One thing I wanted to just mention is, before we do this proclamation, the benefits of parks and recreation are broad and wide range, such a wide range, that they touch us all in very many ways, and some that you don't even realize. There's economic benefits, there are wellness benefits, health benefits, and for a lot of us, it just keeps our mind going to participate in activities, socialization, et cetera. So the benefits are truly endless. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to take a moment and show you a couple of those benefits, some examples. So I'm going to ask our head guard, David, to come on up. We have our aquatic season going crazy right now, right? So we have, from the time that we open to the time that we close, there's people in the water, there's things happening, multiple things, from a staff level to the community member, and I don't think the community members realize the intensity that we have at that pool. We are truly, potentially saving lives in any given moment, and our guards are trained for that, and we spend a lot of time and effort on our training. A couple incidents that happened this last summer that I wanted to mention, and I want to recognize a couple of guards. Angelo Juarez, is Angelo here tonight? And John Luca? No. Okay. So we want to, I just want to quickly just explain a couple of these stories very quickly. Angelo Juarez was a guard, is a guard, and he saved a panicking child who was in the dive well, which is 12 feet deep. The child simply was just overwhelmed and panicking, and Angelo went in and saved him. So that was one of our saves. The other one, John Luca Bucelado, saved a little girl when she went actually underwater, and could have been an act of drowning very easily. So I want to make sure that not only the Council, but the folks watching at home right now and in the audience understand the intensity that our team has and the amount of detail that we put into these things. Florence has never had a situation that ended poorly. These saves happen all over the country, in every pool, public pool there is, but ours is especially special because of the staff that we have here. And I want to have David at this time kind of let you know why our culture is not only intense, but fun, and we concentrate on the fun because it eases the stress and of a stressful job for the lifeguard. So David, with that, please explain our Guard of the Week program and our duck program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Like he said, I am the manager of our Aquatic Center here in town. We do a lot for our town, and we do a lot behind the scenes to make sure that our citizens continue to stay safe. Not only do we have these couple incentive programs that I'm going to talk about, but we also do continuous training. Our guards are required at minimum one hour of training a week, and that's before we open, after we've closed, and sometimes even during we'll run scenario drills. And so we are nonstop training because those rescues are so important. Like Paul said, we haven't had anything major come up, and so it's because of our effort and knowledge that we put into our staff. And some of that is because of our incentive programs that we do. So the first one I'm going to talk about is our Guard of the Week. Every week, we recognize two guards. We go usually between the four head guards and myself that decide who our head guards are. Our guards are picked based on who went above and beyond that week, who showed up and covered shifts, who just needs to be recognized for whatever they did that week. And so part of the incentive program is, you know, every job comes with chores, and so if they are Guard of the Week, they get to go home early after their shift and don't stay and help do chores. And then also, I put a little bit of skin in the game to help emphasize this, and I actually buy the guards of the week lunch one day of the week that they're there. And so just try to get them to get motivated a little bit more and go above and beyond for our town. The next one, as you guys can see, I got my pinky full of nice little rubber duckies. If you've ever been to the Aquatic Center, you probably noticed the beginning of the season, not a lot of rubber duckies out there, and then towards the end of the season, those lanyards are starting to get full of these nice little rubber duckies. So what these rubber duckies do for our guards is each color represents a different thing. And so depending on what they did, they can receive a rubber ducky for that, for what they did. And so I'm going to go over what each color means really quick. So our red rubber duckies represent rescues and saves. So if you ever see a guard with a red rubber duck, that means they have had to get in the water and do a rescue or save. The blue rubber ducky means that they have received Guard of the Week at some point during the summer. Our pink rubber duckies means that they have received a positive comment from the public, whether it was to myself or a head guard or a town representative. The green rubber ducky means that we saw them go above and beyond their actions. An example would be they showed up, right as soon as they were on shift, they went out, set up the whole deck by themselves without any help, which does happen from time to time. So anytime they go above and beyond, they get that green rubber ducky. The yellow rubber ducky, I thought it was the closest to gold, and so this is our top participation in our in-service trainings. So again, that's that training that I talk about that always goes on. At once a week for in-service, we always pick our top member who really gave the in-service their all. They were actively participating the entire time, helping advise other people, and so they get a yellow rubber ducky. And then our last is our purple rubber ducky, which is just kind of like a special recognition from a head guard or from a manager. So if we see something, maybe they did really good talking with this patron and letting them know what was going on, they can receive that purple rubber ducky. So really, I think my top two, my top, well, I can't say they're all my top, but the red is a really important one for me because it shows who is on their game. And then, of course, I always like the purple because that means they really did something good to deserve that. And so our staff is always out there making sure we're safe, and I really appreciate all 37 of our guards that we have for the Town of Florence, and hopefully they know that. So thank you.
Thank you, David. So with that, I'd like to invite, we have several members of our team here tonight, and I want to give them the opportunity to get a picture with Council and the Mayor. And these are the golden folks. These are the people behind the people, and they make everybody look good in Town of Florence, adding to the quality of life for everybody. And also, I'd like to invite Kathy Lehman, who's our Community Services Advisory Commission Committee Board Chair. Thank you.
We are going to go ahead and pass the mic down and introduce ourselves, so if you guys could say your name and what your title is with the town. So I'm Allison Feliz, and I'm the Recreation Superintendent.
My name is Dennis Perry, and I'm the Parks Superintendent.
I'm John Isaac Garcia. I'm a Recreation Leader Two under Bebo.
I'm Melissa Romero. I'm a Recreation One.
I'm Paige McInnes. I'm a Recreation One as well.
Victoria Unigus, Recreation Coordinator.
Lynn Dobbs, State Recreation Two, Fitness Center.
Berri Stoppa, Discovery Club.
Calissa Neo, Recreation Leader One.
Patricia Gurneo, Recreation Leader One.
Clarissa Ballard, I'm a Head Guard.
My name is Kealan Dolan. I'm a Lifeguard.
I'm Giovanna Garcia. I'm a Head Guard.
I'm Fatima Fatimankaheda, Recreation Leader One.
Christian Valencia, and I'm a Lifeguard.
Erasmo Minivo, Rec Coordinator, Events and Teens.
My name is Casey Fowler. I'm a Lifeguard, and I also work Parks and Rec.
My name is John Baptista Vialma. I'm Rec Three, Parks and Recreation for Sports and Aquatics.
David Lewis, Pool Manager.
Ain't that got everybody? All right.
So this is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, July 2024. The print is a little smaller, so thank you, Mr. King. Whereas Parks and Recreation, this is a six font, Ms. Garcia. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Florence, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental of the people who live near the parks. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing spaces for popular activities such as hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to prioritize active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of the healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and whereas Parks and Recreation programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas the Parks and Recreation increases the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation are essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas encourage the ecological beautification of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to recreate. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Walter, the Mayor of the Town of Florence, proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. What I really want to say is please go out and enjoy our amazing facilities and opportunities to engage outside in our amazing community of the Town of Florence. We have fantastic programming going on. They have a robust catalog online that you can take advantage of, not only during the summer, but during the school year. Go to the pool. The pool is fantastic, and we hope to see everybody out on July 4th. We have a fantastic program taking place right over here in downtown Florence, where people come from all over the county to watch the fireworks and the festivities. So thank you, Mr. King, and all of our Parks and Recreation Service employees for your service. Thank you. Let's stay for a picture. Chris, I have several requests for air conditioning from different people, please. This next proclamation, these are one of my favorite proclamations to do. This is for our Employee of the Month recognition. So the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award for July 2024 recognizes David Raver for his outstanding contributions to our organization and celebrates these amazing contributions with coworkers and family. Jay, can you come on up? The Employee of the Month, this process is where every single employee of the Town of Florence, citizens, they nominate somebody who has gone above and beyond, who has done an amazing job, service delivery to the Town of Florence. And the committee gets together, and they go through all of the nominations. They talk about every single nomination that was received. They have discussions, and they select the employee. The employee is recognized here at the council meeting, and you'll also receive a gift card of your choice, $75 to any, $100, we raised it, thank you, Councilmember Neal, to any restaurant or business in the Town of Florence. I want to share a little bit of why you were nominated. Can I do that? Okay. So the following is what the coworkers had to say about David's contribution to the work environment. David, am I saying your name correctly? Raver? Yes. That's very important to me to say it. David Raver was selected to cross-train to support short-staff wastewater treatment plant operations. David has demonstrated a willingness to learn with a cheerful attitude. On June 21st, 2024, David has demonstrated a willingness to learn with a cheerful attitude. All right, I got a little, it's hot in here, I'm so sorry. On June 21st, 2024, the senior wastewater treatment plant operator caught David independently performing a job that David had only observed being done and enacted the routine without specific training. He had never been trained prior on this task. He had only seen it done once. And it was that day. So David, with his dedicated professionalism, he performed the task in accordance with all of the standards, and he did so when he didn't know that he was being watched. And he did a great job. It all worked out amazing, and David's positive attitude and his follow-through have proven very valuable to the Town of Florence and the service that our citizens receive, as he set the expectation of behaviors in response to him performing tasks outside of his job classification. I T, Nathan Robinett hereby nominate David Raver for the Town of Florence Outstanding Employee of the Month.
I'd like to thank everyone. I'm both honored and flattered receiving this award. Thank you, Nathan, for nominating me. I'd also like to thank all my coworkers who have helped me and I've learned from through the time I've been with the Town of Florence. Most of all, I'd like to thank my family, who's, their love, support, and everything helps me to get through like the toughest of days. And to my boys, not many people get these awards, so it's kind of a big thing, and just know that if you take the time out of your day to make other people's day a little bit easier, and you kind of think ahead with the tasks that you have in front of you, you might be surprised at what kind of recognition and how fulfilled you'll be at the end of the day. So that's all. Thank you all for your time.
Can we have David's family and coworkers come on up here to help? This is for you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then we want your family in here, right? Front and center, family. Hi, guys. Can we play that speech for all the employees? That was the best speech ever, and you boys should be very proud of your father. That was the best speech ever, and you boys should be very proud of your father.
the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is appointment of Lonnie Frost to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Item B, appointment of Aiden Rankin as the Youth Liaison to the Community Services Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. Item C, authorization to enter into a cooperative use contract with Weems Asphalt to Sapa, remove old pavement and patch in fourteen areas. This is a total of 7,427 square feet on the Hunt Highway Curve, west of Addaway using the Pinal County JOC 234128. This is for asphalt maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and five cents. Item D is adoption of Resolution 1908-24. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the designation of the applicant's authorized representative and alternate authorized representative forms submission to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, which designates the town's representatives for applying for certain public assistance and authorizing the applicant's authorized representatives to execute and deliver said behalf of the town of Florence. Lastly, we have item E. And item E is the authorization... Hang on one moment. It's on page three, I know, I'm trying to get there. To enter into settlement participation agreement to share in settlements funds for proposed national opioid settlement with Kroger Settlement, CL 78414, and authorizing the mayor, interim town manager, and town attorney to execute all forms and related documentation. Item F is the approval of amendments to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement with the Arizona State Department of Forestry and Wildlands. Item G is authorization to purchase a trailer mount value exercising tool for the water utility staff from WACHS Utility Products in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, one-hundred and nine dollars and nineteen cents. Item H is to accept the warrant register for the month of May 2024 in the amount of three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifteen cents. And item I is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes, Community Services Advisory Board minutes of May 9th, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of April 18th and May 16th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody either in person or online that would like anything removed at this Seeing none, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item 8A, discussion approval disapproval of the appointment of Gilbert Oglen to the Historic District Advisory Commission with a term set to expire on December 31st, 2025, and the appointment of Jania Cathmer and Azur Sullivan to the Historic District Advisory Commission with terms to expire December 31st, 2026. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, as per our code, we went through the... When we have more applications than seats, we went through the process of interviewing. Those people that are on the interview is the staff liaison, the council liaison, and the chair for that board. Those are the people who interview and make the recommendation. The recommendation coming for you today is from that committee, and we're excited to be back into a full status once this appointment is made. So if you have any questions?
I just wanted to say, what a great problem to have, right? Too many applicants. That's a good thing. So just wanted to say thank you to everybody who applied.
And we very much value all applicants who applied and taking the time to care about Florence. It says a lot, and we always want people to be part of our process, so we thank them and encourage them to, once again, submit in the future.
I want to also reiterate what council member Buchalato just stated. There was a time when we didn't have anybody who wanted to serve on our boards and commissions, and it really is a great problem when we have multiple people with extensive backgrounds that want to contribute and volunteer their time, because these are volunteer positions to make our community better. And without you, we wouldn't have those opportunities to bring everybody together. So thank you very much. If you would like an opportunity to talk on this, please let me know, and I'll let you come up to the podium. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion. Okay? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make the motion. If I could just make a comment before I do. So when I first came to Florence, I had the pleasure of joining the Historic District Advisory Commission when Mr. Ogden was the staff lead. So I owe him that he got me started in this, and it gave me great pleasure. All the applicants are very, very passionate, so we are going to do well. I'd like to recommend for the approval of Gilbert Ogden, Jania Cathmer, and Azur Sullivan to the Historic District Advisory Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your service. Item B is discussion approval disapproval of the appointment of Jeffrey Woolley to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire on December 31st, 2025, and the appointment of Donald Allen as alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, council, this went through the same process. We did have the staff liaison, we did have the chair, and we did have the council liaison serving as the committee to recommend. I would like to point out that this will fill all active seats. Your first alternate is in place in case a vacancy comes up, and they are automatically appointed. Underneath the code, we still have one second alternate that is available if anyone would like to apply. And we are, as always, seeking application to make sure we have that second alternate filled. So anybody out there listening that would like to apply, we encourage you to do so. Do you have any questions, mayor or council?
No questions, but if anybody would like to speak, you may. We want to be thankful and appreciative of everybody's time and service, again. Not seeing any, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Jeff Woolley and Donald Allen as the alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your service. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of the appointment of Jeffrey Woolley to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire on December 31st, 2025, and the appointment of Donald Allen as alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2025. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, council, this went through the same process. We did have the staff liaison, we did have the chair, and we did have the council liaison serving as the committee to recommend. I would like to point out that this will fill all active seats. Your first alternate is in place in case a vacancy comes up, and they are automatically appointed. Underneath the code, we still have one second alternate that is available if anyone would like to apply. And we are, as always, seeking application to make sure we have that second alternate filled. So anybody out there listening that would like to apply, we encourage you to do so. Do you have any questions, mayor or council?
No questions, but if anybody would like to speak, you may. We want to be thankful and appreciative of everybody's time and service, again. Not seeing any, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Jeff Woolley and Donald Allen as the alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of the appointment of Xavier Fedor to the teen council with a term set to expire on October 1st, 2024, and the appointment of Madison Hyman to the teen council with a term to expire October 1st, 2025. Ms. Garcia.
We went through the same process. We had our interview panel, but this time, we not only had our mayor who serves as the liaison, two staff members who serve as liaison, and we had two of our teen council members sit in. So on this particular board, we had a five-member board, because with the teens, we always try to do training, and being involved on this end of a interview is huge training that we were able to provide to them. This is the recommendation of the teens moving forward, so I would submit it to the council and say that this would fill our teen advisory board.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you very much for your willingness to step forward. Our teen community is something that all of our council very much cares about, and we appreciate that. We have teens that want to advocate and be a voice, so that way we can work with them and not only train them in regards to civic and involvement in government, but also how we can make the community better together for them, as well as everybody else. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time that's being appointed?
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the agenda, you have Xavier Fedor to expire October 1st of 2024. Is that correct? That he's just going to be on for three months?
And then he can reapply, but those terms were set when the original terms were, to make sure that we had staggered terms.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right, with no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Xavier Fedor to the teen council with a term to expire October 1st, 2024, and the appointment of Madison Hyman, sorry, to the teen council, a term to expire October 1st, 2025.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And thank you for everybody who attended that was here for an appointment this evening or in support of those for an appointment this evening. Next, we have item D, discussion approval disapproval of the art mural project, two conceptual renderings to be painted at the Florence Aquatic Center. Mr. Paul King.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're here to get your vote on executing the art mural at the aquatic center from the two renderings that you see in your packet. The conceptual renderings, they will slightly change depending on the space of the wall and the artist's specifics, but these are the renderings that are the conceptual that we're asking you to consider tonight.
Did you want to put them up so everybody in the audience and the community can see them as well in person and at home?
I would love to with Chris's help, if he could.
Can we show the murals?
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, unfortunately, we don't have those available today. We will put those on our website for the public to see tomorrow, but we don't have those tonight for you to show the public.
Mayor, if I could say, if you would like to put this item on hold while I move on and do the next item with you, we could ask for you to go get those on a thumb drive and come back over with them, so that we could have them for tonight's meeting. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Because we saw them, I just want everybody to know, we have them, we have access.
Could you just pull up the agenda and put it to page 1393?
I'm looking at my agenda, and they're not in color. I would like you to see it colored.
Oh, it's colored online.
Is it online? Yeah, then they can pull up the online version. And if you'd like, we could wait, or we could go on to the next item, whichever you prefer.
Lisa, I was going to say, rather than possibly show us tonight, maybe they could have them on display on the Fourth of July, because that pool is really busy on Fourth of July, so maybe they could be displayed in there, or have the kids vote on which ones they like, or something like that. Make it interactive, or...
If council is not looking to have the project completed this summer, every day it's getting harder and harder for the artists to be able to go out there, so as long as we take that under consideration, because it does take a lot of time and effort to be able to paint murals, and we are suffering through extreme heat on many days.
And normally, I would like totally agree with that, as far as having public feedback, but also wanting to get it completed. I did ask some community members to take a look at them, and the feedback I received was that they loved it minus the animals, is that all of the animals, they weren't a fan of the animals. And so that was the only feedback that I received, and that was my thoughts as well. But this was unsolicited, I didn't ask them to give me specific details of what they liked and didn't like, and that's the one thing that universally I was hearing. So hoping to whatever else anyone else thinks, or... They just didn't, they thought removing the animals would actually make it feel more inviting and make more sense. They did not.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of council, the renderings are up online right now, being shared.
I just wanted to show them, let everybody see them. They're in our packets. We're excited to have public art.
Yeah, I'm... Some of it, I just don't understand the relation to it, and that was, like I said, that was the feedback I also received, was like the crow and why a catfish, and the animals in the tube, what they were and why they were there. So having the removal of the animals seemed like it was a little bit more inviting and a little bit more... Left more room for, like, I don't know, fun space, but also more landscape design.
I also had talked to a couple of people. I didn't hear anything about the other animals. The one thing that stood out to everybody is this crow that looks like he waiting for the... I don't know if it's a polar bear, the gopher that dropped dead so he could eat the crow. Everybody's like, the crow looks scary.
Yeah, Halloween. Yeah, Halloween is what I heard, because it reminded him of Halloween. And the catfish, people don't understand why a catfish, like, so that's why I said if you just... The animals, I think, without the animals would be better.
You know what I thought when I saw the catfish? So we used to, many years ago, in Heritage Park, I don't know if everybody remembers it, they used to flood it every spring. And that's where I taught my son how to go fishing. And for a very long time, there was catfish afterwards in the fields, like after the water went away. It was...
I don't think you'd want to swim in that, though.
No, but we fished.
It was where we had mud volleyball. It was for fun.
I know, I remember. Yeah, I remember it, yeah. But...
I will say, Annie is a very, and Marion and them, they're very good artists, so I'm sure if you asked her to take that off, it would be no issue in her artistic abilities.
Is there any other discussion, any other feedback? I do love that we're getting public art, so thank you.
Yes, very excited to see something go up, so...
All right, Mr. King, would you have anything else that you would like us to add before making a motion?
No, none of the... Other than the fact that we will share your comments with the artist when she's actually creating it on the wall. And we have had conversations about the crow and some other things to accent pieces of Florence and the history and the desert life, if you will.
I like the gopher with the red jumpsuit, though.
I didn't know what it was. I thought it was a polar bear, to be honest. I'm just saying it how I saw it.
Yes, Ms. Lehman, come on up. Ms. Lehman serves on our community services board as well, so she has been entrenched in these discussions throughout the creation.
Thank you, mayor and town council. You know, we had six renderings, I will stress, renderings, that was presented to us from our artist through the Community Service Advisory Board. We had the same sort of reactions that you all did. I couldn't figure out that that was a gopher until it was pointed out to me, but this is one of the things we liked about it, was that it is indicative of our community. That was one of the things for the Community Services Advisory Committee that we wanted to be sure that we represented. The one with the catfish, if you really notice, there's some cotton there in the left-hand side, there's some citrus there, we have the mountains. This is representative of Arizona. We have two other projects that we're going to be talking about in August. And I think everybody will be really happy with that. And so I would just encourage you to think about, these are renderings. We have to, if there's something really glaring that you don't like, you should speak up. But we have to give also the artist a little leeway in being artistic. Thank you very much.
And to Kath, and to that point, it's, though, that's why I usually bite my tongue about art, but also I'm thinking of the selfie, and I did tell Caitlin this, and so she knows this, that, honey, is that I don't take a picture in front of the butterfly because it's got antennas and I don't want a selfie with antennas of my ears sticking out. So things like that, I, I guess for me personally, this is my thing, is that I, I wouldn't want my mouth and, or my head in front of a catfish. So that's, again, that's just a personal feeling, I want something that me and my friends can stand in front of and be like, look at the beautiful Arizona desertscape, or even having Florence written or things of that nature, but the animals sort of distracted from that in my own personal opinion. But that's why I said what I said. But I know it's in the beho, the eye, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. King, thank you, council. With that, we need a motion.
And, and when you're making your motions, will you make it clear so we do understand if you're removing something that we're supposed to say to remove? Because we need to know that we're hearing from a quorum of council.
So the one that I've heard from two members of council, so I'll ask the rest of council, is the crow for feedback?
Artistic freedom, so this is where I'm at a, I'm at a standstill because I don't know if you're... I don't know. Because like, I, like I said, I feel like all animals should go, but no crows, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay with what? The way it is now?
Yeah, the way it is right now is okay for me.
All right, it sounds like we're okay with artistic creation.
Well, Kathy, Kathy?
I, I'm on the fence and I think I made a comment to Director King when, when you first proposed this. This is what happens, but I do agree with Commissioner Larson or Councilmember Larson because one of the big advantages of doing this is having selfies, right? It promotes the town and it's fun, kids love to do that. So I would just ask that we're cognizant, if especially children are in front and taking selfies, that we look and see what's around their head and what that's going to look like in the selfie. Because if not, we're losing a big opportunity here, right? I don't think that's a shade of gray, I think that's one of the reasons why we do this.
Right.
Right? So I would ask that that just be considered. So I'll make a motion that we approve both drawings, both murals, with the condition that the artist consider what the selfie would look like and what's around the people's heads.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you to everybody who's put so much time and effort into bringing art and being on the commissions and the community coming together to make it happen. Next, we have item E, which is discussion on the town's RFP process for special event liquor license for the town's special events, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, this is the item that you asked for us to bring back at this meeting. So in order to be able to do that, I did a deep dive into our process to be able to see what we've done in the past. So the town of Florence, for past 4th of July events, we did issue an RFP. And for past Country of Thunder events, we did issue an RFP to have somebody come in and work with the town to be able to manage that liquor license. This year, for 4th of July, we are not doing a liquor license for 4th of July because it was not successful and the people who participated actually lost money in the process. And that's not the intent for the town of Florence to have a nonprofit do the event and to lose money. The other thing we're talking about is that Country Thunder is typically on Main Street. Road to Country Thunder is typically on Main Street and there's lots of things that can happen. Right now, the town of Florence is actively looking for our next venue. As you know, council went in and had discussions with Mr. King saying that the stage, the makeup, how we do it, the size of the event, that we needed to look at other locations and it might be time to move that a location. So right now, what we're doing is we are actively considering other locations for the event, that will become back to council and that will get confirmation of where we're moving it before we determine how the liquor license will function and what will happen. The other thing I wanted to throw into this process is the town of Florence used to have one place in, on Main Street that had a liquor license. And when we were doing events, that place would be able to do a extension of premises to be able to assist either in chamber events, community events, town activities. And now we have three active liquor licensed, liquor licenses within a very short block. You, at this time, have Irish Cowboy, you have the American Legion, you do have Birds and Bones, all with liquor license. So whatever process the town of Florence puts forward, we just want to put forward a process that is fair to all. So we will be looking into it to make sure that we can do that. And like I said, the town of Florence, we don't, so Third Fridays, we don't decide who does that, how that's going to work. That actually works with Main Street merchants and a vendor. And they are successfully running that program, they do apply for an extension, or they do apply for a special event license and our team goes through that process, making sure that it's safe and that all the events are cleared. But we're not actively involved in giving away or working with who gets to have those events, only events that are the town of Florence's. And at this time, we would only have one event and that would be the Road to Country Thunder next year that we'll be considering. But we'd like you to think about the larger picture and Mr. King is actively working on that.
Mr. King, would you like to add anything to this presentation?
No, I, I think it's just fair to say that we just have a fair, you know, fair and thought-through process when we do any of these solicitations.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that presentation. And thank you, Mr. King. Does any member of council have any further questions or comments? Councilmember Maldonado.
I just want to say thank you for looking into this, I appreciate it. And also with the, being at the last Road to Country Thunder, noticing that as, as a person being there and talking to constituents that, yes, we were outgrown in this event. So thank you for having the foresight for next year. So thank you for that.
I'd just like to add, when we look at this, I understand and I'm thrilled that we have these other commercial establishments that have liquor licenses. But speaking as one of the other nonprofits, I, I do hope that we give some consideration to the nonprofit in this discussion because we have very, very few ways to make money for the nonprofits. And if this is a way the town can help a nonprofit without violating the gift clause, I'd like to consider that.
And, and I would like to respond because I did include the past RFP that explained the outline. The only reason why I brought up the extension of premises is because we don't handle those events that are on Main Street. So I didn't, I wanted to make sure we separated the two.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Our next item is the town manager report. Chief and Town Intermanager Walsh.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, if you look around the staff table, you'll see one of our recent hires is missing. Unfortunately, this weekend, we got notice from Brian that the town of Eloy countered our offer and wanted Brian to go and stay in the town of Eloy. Very apologetic. He came and talked to us and basically said that his heart, his true heart, remains with the town of Eloy and the people that he's directed for the last 18 years. So we want to wish Brian well and we will continue to go and work with the town of Eloy as a partner. I want to assure council that our finance team is intact and it's under good leadership. I also want to go ahead and mention I'm somewhat sad. Allison, come on up here. I'm somewhat sad, but I have to go ahead and say happy at the same time. And I want to go ahead and celebrate this particular young person. Just found out today that Allison is going to seek an opportunity in Santan to go ahead and be a little closer to her husband and her kids that are going to be going to school there. Allison has been a phenomenal employee. And I think for a lot of us, not particularly me, I didn't get to see you from a little toddler all the way up, but a lot of us have seen Allison grow in the town of Florence and she truly is a part of this town. You somewhat make up the town. I can go ahead and tell you, I've watched her at several functions. And she does not ask her people to do anything that she wouldn't do. She's the last one to go and go home at night and that says a lot about your work ethic and we're surely going to go ahead and miss it here. Council, sometimes a bird has to go and leave its nest before it comes back home. So we're wishing her the absolute best and you know that this is your home and when you're ready, we're ready for you to come on back.
I'm trying to do this without crying, but I just wanted to, Florence is home. And I thank you all for the opportunities that you guys have provided me, I'm sorry. And I, I'm excited for my family and the opportunities that I'm going to have, but Florence is home and I'm going to be here, my kids are still going to participate in all of the sports functions that we have. I just, sometimes, you know, gotta spread those wings and fly and my kids were the brave ones who started that and so I'm going to follow in their lead and, and see what, see what happens for me. But definitely not leaving town and always, always going to be cheering Florence on and wishing the best for not only the town, but also my fellow coworkers and everybody that I get, got the opportunity to see. I grew up, grew up in Parks and Recreation, so it's definitely going to be a change, but I'm, I'm excited for it and I know that we're in good hands with the team that we have. So thank you all for the, all the opportunities that you've provided me, it's definitely appreciated.
So Allison, I had a request from a few council members, they said, can we all gather for like a goodbye photo with you? So I said yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I want to just say something. I'll say something.
remind everybody, the Fourth of July Fest is coming up on Thursday. We will have some cooling stations and water available for the festivities, but we ask our citizens to please make sure that they hydrate and please be aware of the extreme heat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department reports, did any member of Council have any questions for our department heads? I don't have any questions either, very comprehensive, thank you. Second call to the public, anybody in the audience or online, would you like to speak at this time? Closing the second call to the public, a call to the Council for current events onlys, Councilmember Adam.
I have lots to say, and all very good news, and I'm all very happy. First of all, we haven't had a lot of complaints about C Click Fix lately, and I just wanted to say, I walk all of our streets downtown, and Ruggles, and Main Street, thank you, it is fabulous. I have noticed a significant difference in cleanup, and a lot of the mesquite trees have been growing over the sidewalks where you can't walk, they've all been trimmed. I know all the town buildings and properties have been cleaned up, and on that line, I'm not sure who's responsible, but have you seen the new Town of Florence signs up? They are gorgeous, gorgeous, really, really nicely done, I love it. I also want to give a shout out to the Chief and Director Monroe. I just recently attended the Historic Preservation Conference in Prescott, and when I walked in, I couldn't believe my eyes, there was our building inspector, Kevin Wall, at the conference. That is the first time this town has sent one of our officials to the conference. It's such an important area. I know you guys did yourself a favor, because most every code violation issue that we have is in Old Town, right? We know how to do new builds, so I, I feel that Kevin got a lot out of it, at least that's what he told me, so I really appreciate. And of course, Mari was there, Mari Selig goes every year. So it was a really terrific conference. And a shout out to the candidates. I know one of the questions in the newspaper was talking about the historic district. You might want to drop in on an HDAC meeting and understand what goes on there, because there's a lot to be learned from that. I just wanted to, my last words to all the commissioners that were just appointed tonight, really wonderful bunch of people, and I'm especially happy for HDAC and P and Z, and it kind of was skimmed over, but appointing Lonnie to the Appeals Board, hopefully we never have to meet, but he is tremendous, so shout out to all of them, thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado.
First of all, I'd like to thank Allison for all she's done for the town and for her selflessness and dedication to this town, and she's going to be deeply missed. Second of all, I want to thank all the volunteers that stepped up to fill these various positions. Volunteers are the ones that make things happen, so thank you for stepping up, don't get discouraged, don't get discouraged, keep trying. Also, I'd like to remind folks, please get out there and do your civic duty and vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
For sake of not repeating the same things over, I think that that has all been said. So I hope to see everybody on the Fourth of July.
Allison, will she leave? I don't even know, I'm not going to talk about her. Allison, great that still remember, she's a little bitty skinny thing, that goes to show you what the town can actually do for you, because I mean, she pretty much could have made a career out of it if she wanted to, and I think that's awesome that Florence does that for people that grew up here and people that moved into here, but go gophers, we come first. Enjoy your Fourth of July, everybody, stay hydrated, water, beer, water, water, beer, water. Make sure you get a lot more water than beer. Go gophers.
Councilmember Bucelato.
How do you follow that, you know?
You say that every week, man.
I know. So I just wanted to say, real quick, also be, be safe this Fourth of July, watch your kids around water, watch the adults that participate in drinking of beverages around water also. And I just wanted to say that I have been speaking out about these cooling stations. There's been a lot of power outages, there's been a lot of issues with the water being off, and we do have a lot of people in need, and I, I know Lisa and Chief Walls are probably tired of me emailing on it, but if we could just identify one or two places open that, or could open in an emergency after hours, I mean, if it's somewhere nearby, I would, I would go man it if I had to. Like, I, I just, the power was out last time for about twelve or thirteen hours, and some people can't take one or two hours without electricity in this heat due to their age or medical condition, and I just think I would really want to be proactive about this, because it just, it's happening a lot, and I just want to make sure that we're covered, especially for the skip users, because that goes out, the wind blows, and it goes out, and it stays out for some time, sometimes. So I just, I want to be proactive on this, and so whatever I need to do, I am more than willing to step in and do to make this happen, or to help identify places, or whatever is needed. So just get with me if I can help with that in any way. And I just wanted to tell everybody, thank you.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
I think everything's been covered. The only thing I want to say is that we have one of the best Fourth of July events in the area, and I believe in Pinell County, so I invite everybody to come down. I've been to a couple meetings in the last couple weeks, and people that are there from Phoenix and stuff, I invited them to come down, so hopefully we see them in the crowd. Aside from that, that's all I got.
So Nicole, I agree with you, and I know that, that was something I wanted to bring up as well, because we utilized prior with the CERT team, our community center. So just to bring that back out on the table, if we could possibly facilitate that in the event of anything moving forward, of having that open, accessible, and available. And I do hope to see everybody on the Fourth of July, right here in the Town of Florence, parking right over at the Aquatic Center. There is a fun-filled day of activities going on, so everybody enjoy responsibly, be safe. I wanted to say thank you to Chief Walls, this is the first time in the many years that I have lived in the Town of Florence, that I, twenty years to be exact, that I saw ADOT Patrol on Hunt Highway actively pulling over large trucks to where they needed to pull off and having, it was almost like they were being inspected, and I don't really know what was happening because I was driving, but it was nice to see their presence in the community, and since then, I have not seen the speeding of those heavy trucks as we have in the past. So you were correct, and it is working, so thank you for being proactive with that. Today's your birthday?
Tomorrow's my birthday.
Tomorrow is Councilmember Larson's birthday, so happy birthday.
You say happy birthday for everybody else. You guys make sure of it.
I do, I always do. I am an educator, I haven't looked at my calendar yet, so we're on summer break. With that, we need a motion, please.
Make a motion. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.